Yeah, okay. So for this meeting to order, we're at the July meeting of the Bingley Town Council. Agenda item 232453 is Chair's Remarks. So for me, we're obviously entering for some holiday period. Our planning and park events start next Friday in Gilmour St. And then run every Friday through the summer holidays to give people an opportunity to have a day out, hopefully in good weather. Our concerts in Myrtle Park are continuing. There's been a couple in July. We've got some more on the 6th and 27th of August coming up.
Well, I saw this Saturday, Sunday.
And so 30th of July, yeah. Thanks, John. I've recently attended a ward partnership meeting. Probably a couple of things to note from the police were, one, that the perpetrator was a state business burglar is now in prison. And two, for those of you out there with Land Rovers and Range Rovers, we're not exempt from the theft wave going throughout the country. And the police advice is to take sensible precautions and keep, especially Range Rovers, keep your keyless ignition key in RFID pouches, especially in your home, because people will clone them through your front door if you leave it on your home table. But they are going quite extensively around the country because there is a major move on it. And then probably the only other thing of real note that's come to light today is the Frostlatz Cricket Club, the planning application for next to it. The appeal against the refusal has been dismissed as of yesterday. So we'll see where that goes.
It'll come down.
Well, who knows? Who knows what the next step will be? But yes, they do not have planning information for that.
Apparently the developers have been on the same.
So I've been told for those properties. So that's it for me. We'll move on swiftly to 232454, apologies of absence, books going around. What if we take them all together?
Proposed.
Proposed by councillors, seconded by councillors, all in favour. Thank you. 232455, disclosures of interest to receive declarations of interest from councillors for items on the agenda. Councillor, let's tell them.
In the interests of clarity, I know Mrs Williams and Mr Shaw.
Okay, thank you.
And for the interest of clarity, my interest with Mrs Williams is declared on my disclosure of interest form.
I think in terms of the meeting interests mounted, I don't see any reason why that should. I mean, you can't take full part in the proportion process. Go on to B, to receive written requests for dispensations for disclosable community interests. No, I wish that was a shorter thing because I'd have to say it all. Also, I can't grant anything. So 232456, minutes of the previous meeting. Does anybody have any comments or corrections on the minutes of the previous meeting?
So, okay.
Proposed by councillor Farth, seconded by councillor Good, all in favour? Yep, okay. Thank you. So we're going to move on to 232457, which is presentation by candidates standing for proportion. Now, in terms of the process of this, guys, the other candidates don't listen to the first, the other candidate's presentation, so I'll take you out into another room over there and we'll bring you back in the order here. You could give your presentation, we will ask you some questions, you want to have been through the law, we'll exclude the public, there isn't public to exclude, we'll then discuss and then we'll bring you back and then we'll have the voting for candidates. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. Well, Michael, you may as well stay. It's not going to be first up, but yeah. Come and sit, please. So this all does remain recorded, just so you know. So, Michael, this is your opportunity to talk through your application and just give us a presentation and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. If you don't mind. Hello, everybody. Matt La Forest, welcome back, all from Reading, Geysda. Actually, lived in Bingley for a couple of years as well, I like that, I'm looking more popular there. Little bit about me, results-oriented individual who likes to get things done either on his own or with a team. Like to do things on a day basis as well, even for myself, even if it moves, you know, a little bit of pain in the arse. But anyway, I've always got things done through continuous improvement, teams delivering excellent quality in safe environment and I've never felt any loss in my own time in full delivery. I was born and brought up in Geysda, just like I said. I'm an apprentice-trained engineer and achieved chartered engineering status. I did my apprenticeship and 24 years worth of work at AETC at the airport. I've run every machine and process in that building or in the buildings that we used to have, it's shrunk considerably now. I've worked in every management department, including work-study methods, planning, laboratory, children-toe, design, marketing, accounts and purchasing, as well as working on every department in the shop floor itself. I lived in Bingley, as I said, my bottom line for two years. I did enjoy it, I liked going out and about and finding these little secrets, the family ran out of tree and their boat building place and a canal and other things, et cetera. And I did enjoy my time when I was here. From there, I moved off and I went to live in Spain. I spent, well, I had a old friend, she bought a house out there, so I went there. Didn't last very long, but I decided I'd give it a go a couple of years. So when I come back and make my runs a bit, I went back out there on my own and I stayed out there for five years. What did I do with and work in a foreign country? Trying to mingle in with the foreign cultures, like Spanish. I designed websites out there. I created websites when we were first started, so I coded everything. Everybody wanted a website at that time, nobody wanted a platform to play from, so I did a lot of structures together, a portfolio together. So I had hotels, a car place over here, TV ads, it's still going, it's a good website now. I don't know many of them, but I know all about them, sort of thing, oh, what they should do and what they shouldn't do. Gets a bit annoying when I'm going to the website and the cat are in and there's a clock issue or it's falling apart or your cat is away and hungry within three ticks. That was the rules that I always worked on. Somebody comes in to the website, cat, then in three ticks, give it over. So what else did I do in Spain? I did property events and I would ultimately end up selling houses. As a biker, I created the Torre de la Business Club as a secretary. We had a couple of prestigious members, Jet Two, and also we had Ramp Out News, local newspaper or Costa Blanca paper and Proseguro Securities from Spain itself, as well as many expats that were out there trying to do business. I lived and worked, I came back into UK after five years, wanted to join, rejoin the races where I've become back to normality and reality and a bit more civilisation, civilisation should I say. I lived and worked in Derry for 15 years, running a few different businesses. I run business units supplying Rolls Royce with ceramic cores and waxes. I also run Doncaster Forgings, the Sheffield, making large drop forgings and also forged turbine blades. And I also run a Rolls Royce product line at SPS Aerostructures in Nottingham, making Rolls Royce engines, engine brackets and lock plates, which is obviously a common theme here in aerospace. One of the things that I like to tell people about aerospace is, it's not like driving a car, so your quality's got to be good. When it fails, upstairs at 30,000 feet, they're in the air by parking, so your cars can be as good as you think they are, but when it's flying, they're absolutely spot on. Anyway, that's just a little bit about quality, it gets in your goal, just quality. I moved into property investment in 2016. We buy, do and rent out houses. We've got nine properties at the moment, ranging from flats, a few bikelets, a shop and several venture malls. Predominantly, we're working Derby and the North West. I moved back into the area of Riddleson two years ago, predominantly to come back to, we name the family. Got to become a grandad first time last week, so I've now got a little granddaughter, Margot. She's doing fine. All through my life, I've shared knowledge, trained and mentored many individuals who have all climbed the ladder of success to various degrees. I like to share whatever I can and to whoever I can. Obviously, big enough to be receptive and want to sort of listen to stuff and want to better themselves, but if they don't, that's fair enough, I just walk away and lean into it. What I bring to the table, 40 years' experience and knowledge, people, management, teams, quality, on-time delivery, health and safety, website design, building, planning, quotations and right first time. Final visiting, I wish to join the council to do some good and make life better for enjoyment of all. England is a good place, you do realise that no matter what it's like when you've lived abroad somewhere, you do know where's nice. Every time I used to come up the road, I used to see every road, I used to come back as important, planes from Spain, now dropping where the cheapest ticket was, usually in Midland South in Manchester. Coming up on the road, you see every road, you start to see green hills and you knew you were home. So hope is where the heart is, as I say. So thank you for your time and if there's any questions, lovely to help.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So what community voluntary activities have you been involved with and what skills and expertise have these given you, which you would bring to the role of a councillor?
Well, one activity I've been involved was Torre de la Business Association, which was a free enterprise. We created it, myself and another person. I was the secretary, she was the chairperson. She was a great people speaker and I was a good ideas person and sort of like loaded the gun and let her fire it, sort of thing. But I do, I do have lots of good ideas, frequently surround some odd people and, you know, that's where I am, whatever I can give, I can give to you.
Hi, Michael, it's Mark Trow, that's the name there. What do you think about our main issues in central Bingley?
Central Bingley?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, honestly, you're a bit of a step above some other places around here. I mean, being all over Keithley's website and that, and if I read, if I believe in what it says, they haven't even started yet really. You know, we've got a time plan and we've got the formation of the time plan, et cetera. So what does Bingley, you know, what does it want? I think you've sort of like nailed a lot of it. We just need refining it some places, but I don't know what happens to everything, so I think, I don't live here anymore, if you're uploading Riddleson, like come here, I walk down here nearly every week.
Yeah.
You know, and took river and things like that. I don't think, we probably don't make enough out of parks and things like that, making it a little bit more nicer. If it could possibly create a more improved walkway on the river or even extenuating the way, that'd be great, you know. Keithley, I've said to numerous people about Keithley, is that, you know, they all compare Keithley and say, well, that would be like Ilkley and have a great shopping centre. It's not Ilkley, it's, you know, Keithley's Keithley and it missed out a long time ago on some of its great assets, which wasn't a great river, could have been a good walkway and parkway down there, it has another river going through it, et cetera. It's a sign of times.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, Michael, Bill Jenlemen. What do you think the main priorities should be for Bingley Town Council over the next three years?
I think it's to listen to people, while improving things, to try and help people, to try and help the community, you know. I know there's lots of grants about, I don't think many areas actually know that there's more than that, you know, to help. It's great, it's about looking for people and getting somewhere better. I think what's great is that the council should look at is the shop structure, you know, the town centre structure. There's times when many of them have gone racking ruined and I've been in quite a number of them, so in this way, I can work that straight. I don't think I can, honestly, I don't think I can see a boarded up shop there. I can take it to others where you're looking to find a shop that's run, so horses to the horse.
Thank you.
I'm John Wood. What are your views on party politics in a town council? And are you a member of a political party?
Well, first of all, I'm not a member of a political party. I did just think I was conservative, but I have voted for other people in the town. I'm not really sure Labour today because I can't see that Labour has a particular manifesto that it wants to share. It might have a generally manifesto, but certainly not sharing it. They simply don't say that, which is why I'm different. Sorry, the first part of your question was?
Party politics within the Bingley Town Council?
Within the Bingley Town Council. I think, I don't think politics should come into it in the town council, sorry. It's like, you know, you try to create something that works, you've got to take everybody's view, book party outside and try and do what you want to do. In larger countries, I know a lot of politics exist in particular, you know, and you make a wrong move from that and you find out how much politics comes into it. But it should not be the factor that drives what we try to do.
Okay, so it's back to me now, so I'm Philip Agivens, I'm the Chair of the Council, you didn't know that. Are you aware of the Knowlun Principles for Public Life and how they affect the work of the council?
I don't.
The Knowlun Principles for Public Life?
No. I'll be looking it up though when I get back.
It's all about honesty and integrity.
In terms of honesty and integrity, I think in general, I'm just too honest. I say what I think and it comes out and it's there for what I say. I don't think, I don't think I've ever done anything dishonest or to be honest, that's one of the things that I treasure most.
Okay, thank you. I'll come back to you for the next one.
Me?
Yeah, number six, please.
Give me.
We're short of people.
Which of the council's current areas of activity are you more interested in becoming involved with?
All of them. Except, except, I'm not actually about green and clean because I don't like clearing floors and rubbish that people left and, of course, I don't.
Nice, back to me. So what's made you come forward to stand for the town council?
It's okay.
What's made you come forward to stand for the town council?
Just to sort of like, well, I'm getting a bit bored of what I'm doing, so property for me, it's, we're not planning on buying any more at this point in time, we're getting squeezed off, right and centre. So I don't have to work, but I need something to get up in my, like everybody, so I'm also considering going into consultancy for engineering, you know, a couple of days a week or a month or whatever and do a bit of that. But I've always fancied stuff like getting involved with councils. My uncle was a councillor, Renan Fawkes from Geysda, he became a councillor, but he died and sort of things. He didn't quite get any further than that. No, I just fancied something like getting involved and try a lot of things and try and make everything better.
So you have plenty of time when you come there?
Well, I don't know, but yeah, I've just got to fit it in with walking, you know, that takes a lot of time, but if it is to let it.
Yeah, okay. Thanks very much, thank you.
That's enough grueling for you.
That's all, thank you. Sorry, I'll have a bit of fun here.
That must be the centre of the church, right?
Don't you?
Tower? That must be the centre of the tower.
No, no, that's Ben Hall.
Why is that? Ben Hall, you're right.
And then the church would go.
Aye.
It would be a stone, it would be a stone that would be found, yeah? 1920.
Oh, you went back a bit there, John.
You can take that up, Stan, you're all right. So this is your opportunity to tell us, tell us why you're here.
Right. First, you know, my name's Mark Shaw, I've lived in Bingley for the last 45 years. I'm single then, I live with my lovely old son, Jack, my builder. I was eight years on Bradford Council, I was the Bradford Children Keithley Planet, I was Deputy Sheriff and Sheriff Committee and I was also the Bradford Representative to the Fire Department. And I just feel I've got something to give to the community. I've done it before for eight years on the Goodest Hill and that's why I'm here today.
Okay, so we've got a number of questions for you.
Well, Mark, we know we're here. What community and voluntary activities have you been involved with and what skills and expertise have these given you, which you would bring to the role of councillor?
I keep getting rid of, that does apply with Prince of London Park. I helped with the allotments at Christmas with David and a few of the other members.
What do you, hi, Mark, what do you think are the main issues in central Bingley?
Issues, main issues. I think we've got problems with, I think the rest of it, I think, when there's charges a lot, the parking and things like that, is the, it's causing issues with bringing people to the town centre. The town centre's too many charity shops and hairdressers, not enough. Because if you go back to like the 90s in Bingley, we had everything, everything in Bingley, you could go and buy a television in Bingley, you could go and buy whatever you want, a sports shop, but you had all sorts of, it was a more diverse town centre. These days, we've got, as I said, we've got two supermarkets and a, and a lot of charity shops.
Yeah.
Hi, Mark, and Bill Jenlemen. What do you think the main priorities should be for Bingley Town Council over the next three years?
Ah, the main priorities. Because the problem, I don't know, we live in this ring pool, which would be nice if we could do something with it. It'd be nice if we could do something with the town hall as well, I don't see why, to be honest, why would we lose it as well? What do you think, of course, what's going on in our town centre a lot more? Because we're obviously going backwards.
What are your main views on party politics in the town council? And are you a member of a political party?
I'm not a member of a political party and I prefer to stay in the community.
What are your views on party politics within the council?
I don't think there's a place for party politics in the council.
Okay, Mark. Are you aware of the Knowlun Principles for Public Life and how they affect the work of a councillor?
No. What is the Knowlun?
It's a list of seven principles about how you should behave as a councillor, including being respectful, having integrity, et cetera. I would have thought, you would have come across them in your previous.
Never heard of it before my life.
Fine.
Which, that's me, Mark, which of the council's current areas of activity are you most interested in becoming involved?
I've got extensive knowledge of planning and things like that. I also handle lots of the lot with the Sheriff Committee, so that's my main experience of experience.
You've been a bit of a planner in particular.
Probably, yeah.
So what's, what's made you come forward to stand with the town councillor, Mark? What's motivated you?
I got approached by David and Amber and they, and to be honest, I enjoyed doing council when I did it for the Bradford Council. So I enjoyed getting things done and the satisfaction I've been seeing and pushing things forwards and I've flipped in Bingley all my life and been asked to put something back.
Uh huh. Good. Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Back into the cell.
I'd like to start off saying thank you to the councillors, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to speak to you today. I hope you've read my application, I've noted my application, I've laid out my previous experiences when I was working, I'm retired now. So to continue, the timing now is right for me. For the past 11 years, I have been the most important part in the early years and pre-school care of five of our six grandchildren. To enable our three daughters to continue in their daily working lives, each one in turn dropped off to be mostly three days per week for total care from age two, with additional supervision through nursery years, right up to the main school. Our daughters very much appreciated the in locum spicens assistance I could give them. They're all at school now and I have just one left and I should be carrying them just one day a week. So this mass exodus to big school will naturally leave so much more time for me personally to move on to more adult considerations. So, Bingley Town Council, I want to put this in capital letters, I care. I wasn't born in Bingley, but I have lived in Bingley for 33 and a half years. Our daughters, who are four, six and nine, were moved from London in 1990. Myself and my husband have no desire to live anywhere else. And our three children, and our three now adult daughters with families of their own, all live within 15 minutes' drive. So we are tied to Bingley. It is our town. We care deeply. It is our town and we care deeply about how it is run and managed. We have lived in the same house for twenty three and a half years and have no desire to move. But we do care. I care about the rise in tide, the crime, the cleanliness of our streets, parks and countryways. The rising levels of crime, petty and violent on the roads, people have property and the police fighting and losing back against it all. And always we are told it is down to lack of funding. And this concern is also spread to the dire state of our health funding. The occasional lack of dentist availability in our area, for instance. And the educational choices for all the children in the schools. You will say that the management of all this is down to the government or Bradford District Council. So what can I do as a Bingley citizen? Not much if I'm relegated to housework, garden, watch TV in Sainsbury's and all the experience of the had been life going to waste. And that is why I want to join this town council. I want to join in with the other Conservative councillors and residents of Bingley to help with the main minor and macro concerns of the area. I want to do my bit for the betterment of Bingley and the ward I represent. Me and my Lusha, I care about the colour of the petunias in the hanging baskets and how pretty the town is looking in summertime. I care about the litter over there from the litter pings on the street. I want to listen to the concerns from fellow residents and assist if I can. If there is a cause I can believe in, I can promote it and put forward in reasoned debate. Conversely, if I feel a decision is unfair or unjust, I can argue in reasoned debate also. I think I am scrupulously honest and can offer a fair, non-biased advice at the table. And that's me in a nutshell, really.
We've got a few questions, Adam. And I have, we've got a few questions. I've got a few questions, so.
Adam, with a lot of questions.
What community and voluntary activities have you been involved with? And what skills and expertise have these given you? Which you would bring to the role of councillor?
Thank you, councillor. Well, on community, I joined the Bradford volunteering scheme. And that was local, brought it down from citywide to local. And in the pandemic, I volunteered and took all food parcels from all the Hawkins, all the, they're called banquet schools now, Hawkins, Bingley, Thornton. I used to load my car up with thirty boxes this size, filled the boot up and delivered to all the children throughout the pandemic, those who couldn't get to school. I also carried on that volunteering when it got to Christmas time, when Bradford District Council took in a lot of emigres, shall we say, from Siberia. And they were left at Christmas time with nothing, they were put up in vacant houses. And I was told we don't need to give a Christmas present to the children. So I dressed up as an elf, maybe got fancy dress outfit. Dressed up as a single Christmas elf and jingled my way. And these foreign children just looked at me as if I was mad for Christmas tree. And delivered their Christmas presents, their late Christmas presents. I also joined in Gilce's School and did help to reading with the children. And in the early years of Gilstead, I say Gilstead because I've been here since it was a middle school. So there is going to be Gilstead, but yeah, Gilstead's where I used to go and sit with the children, listen to them reading and take me through. So I did what I did. And that was, but then I had five grandchildren.
What, Lynn, Mark Trover, what do you think are the main issues in central Bingley?
In central Bingley? Well, as I've said to my family, there's a lot goes on when we go to Beijing. The nature of Bingley changes. You see, I'm fascinated, I've watched that Interceptors programme, goes all around the country. But sometimes they come on the key of Bingley district. That is really fascinating because then you can really see what goes on. The colours that speak down that bypass at a hundred and twenty miles an hour. And I remember watching, because I had TV cameras in the back of the interceptor car, I'd say, oh, that's just the express. Boom, I'm going to go past Bingley, boom. And the things that go on at night. Also, a lot of my neighbours have got CCTV and the crime that goes on at night, the car thefts, the shed, trying to get into the sheds and everything like that, it's frightening. So yes, I would consider that.
Very good, thank you.
Hi, Lynn, and Bill Jellemore. What do you think the main priorities should be for Bingley Town Council in the next three years?
Now, let me think. One of the things I've noticed in my tenure of Bingley. When we first moved here in nineteen ninety, and I eventually got a job as manager of the Halifax Estate Agency in Leamont Street. And I took countless interviews of people who literally wanted to get into Bingley. They'd sold their house with some purpose of getting into Bingley and being a resident so they could get their children into the catchment area of Bingley Grammar School. That doesn't happen these days. Gradually, the high street's nature has changed from a really interesting mix of retail to charity shops and estate agents and another. And that's, I think, I personally, go on, I'm being bad now. I think the perfect high street is Saltair High Street. It's got a perfect mix of retail and general shopping to bring the footfall in. And that's what it means, footfall brings extra, it's so sterling, brings something, footfall more of more business. That's what I would like to see to Bingley, to be restored to where it was.
Thank you.
Well, John Wood, what are your views on party politics in the town council? And are you a member of a political party?
I'm not aware of the politics within the council, obviously. Still doesn't tell me everything. I am a member of the Conservative Party, have been for many years. But then I go to the meetings once a month at the Bramble Cabin, now the White Horse. But I'm not an activist political member. I just like to sit with people whose views align with mine, but I am fair minded.
Actually, I wonder if you think that there's been a place for party politics within the town council?
I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood. Actually, it just comes to shut my trigger, so there shouldn't be any. Because we're all working for the betterment of Bingley rather than pushing one party or the other. It should be for the betterment and advancement of Bingley. Sorry, I oversaid.
Okay, are you aware of the known principles for public life and how they affect the work of a councillor?
And how they affect?
The work of a councillor.
No, I'm not a councillor.
Are you aware of the known principles?
No. I can lie down as soon as I am if I am.
Diana, which of the council's current areas of activity are you most interested in becoming involved with?
I think this is to do with council planning. I think this is to do with my staff, you know, I'm a Pisces, I'm going two directions. I'm very versatile, very flexible. I like planning, I like the, as I mentioned already, the marketing of Bingley. I want to raise its profile. I'm even interested in a lot of the gardens, I'm a keen gardener myself. My flowers are in Bingley Lake, so I love, so I'll turn my hand to anything.
Right, just the last question is what made you come forward to stand for the town councillor at this time?
Right, that's the beginning of my presentation, as the timer's right for me now. All my littleies have gone on to big school. I've just got one baby left and he's not even with me, yeah? When it comes September, he will be, it's just one day a week. And I've got so much free time. I've had so much experience in my working life. I hate being retired. I hate it. I've always been very busy, that's why I like to volunteer when I could. But I just want to do something, I want to make a difference, I want to be part of the community. I don't want to watch this morning and just go to Sainsbury's.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's your grilling over. So I need to put you back in the back in the box. Expose the person public and.
Pause for the recording. I wish we had a camera down there.